You're very welcome to the Irish Political Roundup with me, Roisin DeClerck, here on the County Council's Caucus Roundtable, the forgotten powerhouse of the Irish political system.
And me, Roisin DeClerck.
And me, Paul Roffey. And joining us here on episode seven of our Councilor's Roundtable Caucus Discussion, we have a mix of new and experienced faces today. We are joined once again by independent councillor for the borough, local electorate area councillor John Lahy, who is also the current coherlock of Offaly County Council. John has over sixteen years' experience as a public representative. Also joining us is another very, very experienced county councillor, representing the Athlone Local Electorate Area on Westmead County Council, Independent Ireland's Paul Hogan, has over twenty-one years' experience as a public rep and is a former mayor of Athlone and is the current last coherlock of Westmead County Council. The Midlands is well represented here today, Roisin.
Sure is.
And our first relatively new councillor joining us today is Fianna Fáil councillor Daniel Prender, who represents the Meunbeg Local Electorate Area on, sorry, Carlow County Council, who was elected for the first time in June twenty twenty-four. Daniel is also the current coherlock of the Meunbeg Municipal District, in fact, the youngest coherlock in this district. And our fourth member of our panel this evening today is councillor David Boin of Aintú. Councillor Boin represents the Slim LEA on Mead County Council. David was first elected in June twenty twenty-four, the very first attempt. Gentlemen, you're all very welcome to the Irish Political Roundup County Council Roundtable Caucus Discussion.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John will kick off with you. So what we generally.
Just froze there, Roisin. Roisin just froze there for a second.
Gentlemen, what we usually do is we kick off what's happening in your local area, what you're bringing up in the county council, what other county councils say to you, or what you're hearing on the ground. So councillor John Lahy will start with you.
Yeah, thanks very much, Roisin. And I feel like I maybe have been mentioning budgets for the last couple of weeks, but I suppose as the lads would know, we're in that silly season where we're trying to get budgets passed. We were in the draft format the last time I spoke. Thankfully, we passed a hundred and two million of a budget. It's amazing, since we started, I started back in two thousand and nine, it's an eighty percent increase in the budget. In two thousand and nine, we were at fifty-five million, we're at one hundred and two million now. So it's great for the county. We're a small county, no different than our neighbouring partners there. Paul, you know how it's like trying to keep the thing going. But yeah, we passed the budget. We had unanimous agreement, which was actually a historic moment. And I suppose a lot of that was down to when I took over as chair, the one thing I said is that I'd meet individual groups, say political parties and whatnot, just to try to get these things teased out. There was a lot more work behind the scenes, but when it came to Budget Day, it was great that we actually got unanimous agreement and there was no changes on the budgets. Now, we did increase our rates by five percent. So we thought to be, not enough to be a kickback on that, but we got through that, Roisin and Paul, thankfully. So I'm still alive. It wasn't a major kickback, but I suppose it's yielding another half a million for the council and we're putting money back into the community, like playgrounds, shop fronts, bacon properties, stuff that maybe it's hard to give out about in some respects, Christmas lights as well. So it's kind of like a pro-business budget in some respects because we were trying to, the whole idea with the budget was to create footfall into the bigger towns, particularly coming up to Christmas. So we hope that will yield a return for us. The other couple of things that I was working on that was kind of prevalent to the council is the Just Transition. And Paul, we're very familiar with the Just Transition. Now, we'd be on opposite sides of the fence. We think Offaly should be getting all the money under Just Transition in the decarbonisation, say going from brown to green. So there was TUS, which is in Paul's constituency, a huge player in the Midlands. So they were launching a platform where they were trying to bring the agencies together for collaboration. So it's kind of like the method was nobody left behind. Now, I think it's very, very good. So effectively, no different than your own councils, lads. We'd have the leash off the education training board, say, which would be formerly the old the VEC. We'd have Offaly Local Development Company, which is a major funding organisation for community groups. Not enough with Offaly County Council. I suppose the whole method of this was to make sure that all, anybody that was in that circle, that everybody, though nobody was overlapping, but we were all working together. So TUS got money from the Just Transition to put staff in position to actually go out to communities and encourage small businesses, small farmers to engage, to rescale, look at other opportunities in terms of a sustainable economy. So that was very, very good. I'd be honest with you, I had to go and do a huge amount of research on it because it was kind of high-tech when you get into the university side of it. But it's something that'll play out well for Offaly, I think, in the future. And I've no doubt, I think, any county in the Midlands, I think, is going to be, it's going to be launching it. The other thing is, I just was kind of a novel thing today, and I just bring it to your attention, it's something that maybe, and Roisin and Paul touched on it. I picked up, I'd say over the last seven or eight weeks, I picked up little nuggets that's happening in other counties, and I'm actually bringing them in as motions and various other things. But this was an idea that we launched today. It's called the Savvy Teens. So effectively, the local authorities had taken in two pupils from every secondary school in the county, and they actually went in and gave them meaningful work experience for six to eight weeks in the local authority. But it wasn't just coming in and just pair of pencils and there you go. It was actually project-led. So effectively, what happened was they went in and actually spent a week in housing, a week in, say, the likes of environment, a week in roads. And they were given specific projects to go out and actually do fact-finding in terms of looking at maybe a derelict building, what's the future use of it? What potentially would it cost? Now, for TYs, it was kind of fairly, you know, it's fairly sophisticated for them, but they actually adapted to it. So it was fully funded by Offaly County Council, and today we brought in the parents and brought in the students and they were given a certificate. Now, it sounds simple, but if you were there, you would have actually seen the impact that would have had. And I think, you know, we've all heard about kids going on TYs and going on work experience and left in a corner, or left filing something, or left twiddling at home and playing with their phone. But they really got something from it and got a certificate. So if any of the councillors want to maybe, or any of the councillors on tonight wants to tap into me, like what Roisin was saying, I'm telling you, lads, I'm not even doing it just to explain it. It was absolutely brilliant for them. So that's really it, Roisin. The usual things that happens in the political life, the phone calls and the housing and the roads and the weather getting worse and the potholes starting to develop, that's actually just a big thing now. And that'll kickstart now with the frosty weathers. So I'm not looking forward to the next three or four weeks with all the phone calls coming in. But outside that, they were probably the three main things that I kind of had this week that kind of occupied a good bit of time.
Yeah, and that actually sounds like a brilliant idea, that work experience programme for TY. And we all talk about kind of getting more young people, say, involved in their community or being more kind of aware of what's happening. And I suppose it's a great way to kind of see all the different parts of the local authority because, John, I can imagine that, you know, since you started, the level of work that the council has taken on over the last number of years has increased, like particularly in the areas like tourism and enterprise and community as well would be, be two, couple of examples there.
Oh, big time, Paul. Like the community sector now, you walk into the community department, I remember when there would be to be two people in the community sector, we had men and a person on the ground. Now it's a team of twelve. Like even during night, we had, I actually failed to mention it, is we had, and the first time the local authority done it, we had a community involuntary recognition night. So we brought in, say, the various groups. They applied and they were assessed, like prior to place, and actually were brought in. And there was awards given and there was a dinner and the chief executive spoke. I spoke as coherlock. So the whole community sector has completely evolved. And like, we're pitching ourselves in Offaly with no choice on the tourism side of it. So the bogs that are maybe being revamped, let be wind turbines, whatever the case may be, you know, we're looking at the different parklands, we're looking at linking all these kind of, the canal, you know, all the bog trails back through the sleeve bloom. So we're heavily, heavily involved. Stuff that we wouldn't be doing, Paul, seventeen years ago, is probably high on the agenda now. So there's a huge add-on. But definitely, lads, if you want information on it, and the other thing with Savvy Teens, it's actually, it was a portal that they had to put their work up onto. So it wasn't, that wasn't like, like they had assignments and various things to do. And I had the opportunity to meet twenty-four of them there today and they absolutely loved it. But yeah, so that's me for this week.
And I suppose next we'll go to councillor Paul Hogan of Independent Ireland. Paul, you're very welcome to the Irish Political Roundup County Council Roundtable Caucus for the first time. You're based in Athlone. What have been the kind of the big issues that have been coming up in Athlone and the issues that you've been dealing with?
Yeah, well, I suppose firstly, just thanks very much for inviting me on.
You're very welcome.
I suppose one of those things that I've been working on has been well aired in terms of the media. I, along with a number of other councillors in the Athlone area, we challenged the development of an I Pass centre and temporary accommodation for up to a thousand, two thousand single adult males on a site just outside Athlone. We challenged it last November and just in the recent weeks, the Justice Assembly Farrel quashed the ministerial order, put a stay on it for four months, but essentially it has been described as a great day for local democracy, a great day for local government. Essentially, what the state tried to do was to go around planning an environmental law. You know, there was a clear breach in terms of procedures, like other areas, no consultation. The minister didn't have the expertise in terms of the environmental impact assessments and carrying out of those assessments as well. And I suppose the whole bypassing of the standard procedures would have taken this under the Emergency Act of section one eight one of the Planning and Development Act. So like I said, we challenged this, going back to last November. The state actually conceded us last December, but kept us in the court for the last eleven months. I think we were in the High Court fourteen or fifteen different times, number of adjournments, number of deferrals, but ultimately, look, democracy won out. Local elected members, you know, had a victory in terms of the High Court. We were represented by who I would consider the best legal team in the country of Patrick Cunningham and co, solicitors, David O'Brien as our barrister of law and Ushin Collins as our senior counsel. I suppose a legal team that would have recognition anywhere in the state. We set up a GoFundMe page, totally funded by the community. There was fifty-one thousand raised in just under two weeks. And essentially, that enabled us to then take the case. I suppose the caveat going forward is that wherever there is state-owned lands, you know, the state is looking at bringing in retrospective legislation, which essentially would enable them to regularise any planning irregularities that would have, would have taken place in terms of these sites. You know, it's a piece of legislation that is fraught in terms of challenges and potential challenges going forward. I know John mentioned in terms of wind turbines, they tried, they actually tried this type of legislation back in, I think, around two thousand and nine in terms of wind turbines, where they tried to bring in retrospective legislation on a site that's specific or subject to an EIA, which is next to impossible. And it went off to the European Court and the European Court found against Ireland, as it turned out, and we're still paying, I think, fifteen grand a day in fines because the wind turbine is, wind turbine and the wind farm is still below in Derry Brian, and they now have to conduct another EIA to actually take down the turbines. And that process, you'll all know about it, it's there in the media for all to see. So yeah, I suppose that's one item that we've been working on, a substantial piece of work. As I said, it's great to come out the right side of it. And I suppose coupled with that, and again, because it's the local government and the County Council Caucus that we're talking about, we also moved, so everybody knows about the High Court case because it was all over the media and everybody was aware of it, we also moved one of our reserve functions. So I managed to find an old reserve function in the Sanitary Services Act of nineteen forty-eight. So the piece of legislation is whatever, seventy-seven years old or whatever it is, but it still stands. And essentially, elected members of local government have a reserve function whereby they can prohibit the erection of temporary dwellings. We moved that pass unanimously in the district and its specific reserve function to the district. And it is currently with the Minister for Local Government. So we're still pushing, we're still pushing in terms of him making a decision in terms of upholding our democratic decision in the Athlone district. So look, as I said, there's plenty to talk about in terms of all of that. For us, it was never about the people coming in. It was that the state should have to comply with the same planning and environmental law that they make everyone else comply with so stringently. You know, and there are many different examples. You could look at the modular home below in Tipperary and what that man had to go through in terms of his home. So if they're willing to push people in terms of that, they should be able to comply with their own legislation themselves. And as I said, look, I was ably, very ably supported by councillor Angus Rourke, councillor Frankie Keena, both the Fianna Fáil, and councillor John Dolan of Fine Gael. And we had a four-person team. And as I said, they were, they were in the High Court for every step of the way as well. So, you know, it was a real team effort, real collaboration. You know, the collective mind working together. And as I said, a very successful day for local government, you know, across the country. And I suppose the ILG would be recognising that as well as our representative body. John mentioned the budget. We are heading into budget on Monday. We took a little, we took a different approach this year. So instead of us going in committee and going through all the programmes, like we have done for the last twenty-odd years, what we did this year was, we obviously met in committee, but we agreed, I suppose, the points of principle that framed the budget going forward. So instead of the executive coming with a budget to us and saying, this is the draft budget, make your changes, we agreed the overall principles that we needed to see in the budget first, and then they went off and drafted it. And it is now being presented to us on Monday. So Westmead County Council's budget this year is a hundred and thirty million, up, I think, from a hundred and nineteen million last year. So housing grants are up by half a million. So that's people with disabilities, older people, Creekona, all up. The housing maintenance and improvements for all local authority stock, up about four million, up to four million, sorry. Homeless services are up two and a half million. We have an overall rate reduction for eighty-one percent of all rate payers. But I suppose for the others, we will see a significant increase of ten percent. So for the small indigenous family-owned businesses, eighty-one percent who, I suppose, have a rates bill of under five grand will see a reduction in their rates. For the other ones, the larger corporates and utilities, et cetera, they will see an increase. Economic community development up, recreation and amenities up, and obviously roads programme up as well. So, look, it's a very progressive budget. We're certainly happy in terms of the approach of it this year. And it's interesting, John mentioned in terms of the community awards. I was at the Community and Sporting Awards last night in Athlone. I suppose a really important event, really well-attended, you know, three hundred odd people there, organised by our local newspaper, the Westmead Independent. And I know their subsidiary is over in John's constituency as well. And it's great just to be in a room and to recognise all of the unsung heroes in our local community. So look, I was certainly there. We had a great year this year in terms of the Athlone Town Ladies, won the double.
Absolutely.
First time ever, league and cup. So a number of those were there. Kayleigh Shine, I presented her with an award last night in terms of overall sporting achievement. But no more than Athlone, I'm sure, in Borough, I'm sure, Dave in terms of Navan and Dan down in Carlow. There is an absolute need across the board for more playing pitches, more recreation, more amenity, more playgrounds. You know, more sensory facilities for young people with autism or young people with disabilities. And I think that's going to be a challenge going forward. We're going to be certainly looking at it in terms of zonings and the county development plan, which is coming before us next year. And the one other small area that I just want to touch on is, in terms of rural Ireland, the difficulties that young couples are experiencing in terms of planning. You know, and the guidelines go back to, I think, two thousand and five, two thousand and six. Dick Roche was the minister at the time, brought out this concept in terms of four or five houses as ribbon development. We really need to look at that as a society, as a state. And I understand it's going through review at the minute in terms of the OPR's work, but that's certainly an area. Because without your local couples who grew up in a village, who grew up in a rural community, without them, they're going to then move into larger towns. Your GEA is going to be affected, your school is going to be affected, your local rural business is going to be affected, and every aspect of rural life. They need young couples, they need young families, they need people who grew up in the area. And we shouldn't be, as planning authorities, shouldn't be tying the hands of local people who wish to seek, and who wish to seek to have their family home in their local community. And I think that whole area of ribbon development certainly needs to be looked at. And as I said, those guidelines go back twenty-odd years at this stage and are well and truly in need of review and reform. So in terms of, in terms of Westmeath, in terms of my involvement, I suppose, over the last week or ten days or so at this stage, they would be the key issues that I've been involved in.
Yeah, you've certainly been extremely active, Paul. And they do say, when we talk about local government, they said like the lack of powers, et cetera, things like that. And it is true to a certain extent, but you, yourselves in Westmead County Council and your council college, you used what you had and, you know, you maximised it to the most. And of course, the people of your area are hugely behind you. It's fifty-one thousand to help with your legal costs, that's some achievement.
In two weeks, we cut it off after two weeks. And then that's what was raised. So I think over a thousand people subscribed. Over a thousand people donated. So look, it is a huge issue. And as I said, we're not anti, we have, we have one of the longest direct provision, longest in time, direct provision centres in Ireland in Athlone. When the original direct provision policy came in in two thousand, we had the very first direct provision centre in Athlone, still there. And we met the department and we said to them, look, you know, smaller manageable-sized numbers can integrate and assimilate into the local economy, into the local community. But where you start heaping in and increase Athlone's population by ten or twenty percent overnight, it's not possible to manage it, it's not possible to integrate, it's not possible to assimilate people into a community with such huge numbers and a role in then for six months. And as I said, we have the longest direct provision centre in the state, but we also have maybe six or seven others. So as I said, it's not that we're anti, you know, I Pass or anti anything. From our perspective, they should have gone through the right channels, they should have put it through the planning process, they shouldn't try to be stepping around the planning process. And they should give communities a right to have a voice in terms of a public consultation period. What they tried to do with us was to try to skirt around all of that, go through emergency powers, but then to skip the whole number of points in terms of that, in terms of environmental assessments and other planning aspects as well that I mentioned at the outset. And for us, you know, it just wasn't acceptable. And when we went and when we put an alternative plan to the department, more or less laughed at us. And we're the people on the ground, we know the ground better than anybody, and we know the community certainly better than anybody, and we know what's needed for the next twenty years. And we want to leave Athlone in a much better place, you know, for the next generation. And I'm sure that's the same with all of you.
Yeah, without a shadow of a doubt. And I suppose our next councillor is Fianna Fáil councillor for the Meunbeg Municipal District councillor Daniel Prender.
Yep, thanks for having me on. It's great to be able to talk about what I'm up to, but also to hear what other councillors are up to. There's a lot of good ideas there and it's good to see the work that is going on, particularly, I think, in the current environment where politics seems to be very fractured and little time for actual discussion in an online space. So it's nice to see that change and for a collegiate approach to be taken. So I do value this opportunity. I suppose like John and Paul, there's, this week was Budget Week, we had the budget yesterday. Like, we saw increases and we voted to increase our local property tax to the maximum variation earlier. So we're now seeing an increased budget as a result of that. And it was voted not just by the coalition on the council, but a lot of the opposition went with it as well, as a result of, I suppose, there's a lot of jobs to be done on the list that are not getting done because of financial constraints. So we opted to go for that. And it's good that we're facing into that. We're able to go to people and say, there is more work going to be done now and we're not going to see a real terms cut in terms of services. When it comes to the budget, there was a couple of interesting things that we didn't alter this year, but we're setting up mechanisms to deal with them going forward. So I think, Paul, you touched on it briefly there about how it's not okay. Next year, we don't want to be in the same position where we meet in committee and we're just kind of handed a budget and we ask some tough questions, some not-so-tough questions, we'll be straight up about it. And then, you know, it's either kind of, we accept it or we don't pass the budget and we're left in that catch twenty-two. So we're going to set up a committee that will work with management to ensure that our priorities are in place in that budget and they're represented. So it's something similar to what was mentioned there. There's also a couple of ideas around a more progressive system for rating, so that going forward, you know, now this is not something that's going to be agreed or whatever, but we're certainly going to examine it whereby, you know, smaller businesses will not be taxed as much. Some, the larger ones will be hit more potentially. That's something we want to see. Is it legal? What are the outcomes if we go for it? And, you know, what are the pros and cons and examine it a little bit more. And then I suppose dereliction was the big one. In Carlow County Council, there is a system whereby if you have rates under five thousand and your property is vacant, then you do not have to pay it, you get the rebate immediately. And then anything above that is rebated at a rate of fifty percent. So there was a lot of discussion about how appropriate it is. And then it's interesting, once you ask these questions and the conversation gets going, why these decisions have been taken, this has been ongoing for about six years. So we're going to review that. Again, another committee is going to be set up to discuss how many of these are actually, how many of these businesses are things that need to simply be reclassified? Or if we go to reclassify them, is it simply going to push away businesses, business spaces that might have been rejuvenated? But we're pushing them away? Or is it a case of it's, we need to adopt the more hardline approach of use it or lose it? Or simply just pay the tax on it? So there was a lot of interesting ideas. The budget overall was quite good. There's more money for roads, which as a rural councillor, and anyone else on this call will appreciate it. It's the bread and butter. If we don't get the potholes done, people are quick to let us know about it. And it, look, it's just a normal quality of life thing and people pay their taxes and they expect at the very least the road will be decent enough for them to drive on. Outside of that, I suppose there's been some Public Realms Works taking place in the main town in my MD. And it's been subject to a lot of controversy. They're taking between four and six car parking spaces out on the main street there. But it's not a matter of just expanding the width of footpaths. Magna's town is quite an old town. So it's not built in a wheelchair-accessible way. For anyone who has any accessibility issues, it's quite difficult to navigate. And even trying to cross the road, it can be quite difficult because of people, because of the narrowness of the streets. So they're putting in measures there to try and deal with that, however, it's been incredibly controversial. With people splitting probably sixty, forty against it, from what I can read, but that's only the people who are speaking up, which, you know, is, of course, going to lead to more people being negative, I think. I can see both sides of the argument. I think car parking is an issue and we do need to do our best to support businesses, but equally, it's trying to balance that with accessibility for everyone. It's a group in society that's been left behind and we don't want that to continue on. But it's trying to make sure that the people who get up and do go out there and keep businesses afloat and people who go out there and work are able to get on and ensure that businesses cannot only survive but thrive. So it's trying to marry the two here and make sure that they work. So that's what I've been working on this week. Aside from the usual, you know, the potholes, housing reps and all of that kind of stuff. The one particular issue I want to throw out there as well is lighting contracts. We have, we have to report via the Dead Shire system and I see it's quite common across a lot of Ireland. I haven't exactly honed in on which counties do and don't have it, but when you go on to the report list. Honed in on which counties do and don't have it, but when you go onto the report list, a lot of the counties do come up. And um we're having serious trouble with them here in Carlo. Like, there are a lot of lights that have been out for um for just weeks. Like, it it's almost like you reported the thing and it's disappeared into a black hole and it's not going to come back out of it. And it's quite frustrating because people imagine, you know, it will be sorted within a week, within two weeks at the very least. And there are some there that are just not getting sorted. And when you pay a private contractor over a million euro to deal with this. It you do have to begin to question the value for money. And uh I suppose it leads on further into the E S B. That there are some poles that simply have E S B issues, but again, it seems to be taking months and months and months for the E S B to call out. And do the first diagnosis, for want of a better word, of what exactly is wrong. But then another few months for them to call back out and actually rectify the issue. So, look, that was kind of one of the key bugbears for uh for me and a few of the other councillors down this way. So that that's my week anyway.
Yeah, absolutely. And Daniel, you brought up a a point there around rates. Um and a link to the size, size of the business. Um how do you, you, would you kind of determine that? Is that based on income or?
This is all to be discussed. It's more an idea that's going to be talked about. And we'll see whether it's something that's even applicable in the first place. And then if it's just going to be a case of, look, the system we have. Might not be ideal, but it is the best thing to keep in place. So, look, it it's all on the table to discuss at the moment.
Because because as we know, all businesses, they have to submit their their yearly accounts. And some those accounts would tell you the income or how a well or not so well a bi- a business might be doing. And I remember people saying saying that a long time ago, that rate should be linked linked to the income and stuff like that. So maybe that could be. That could be something that would be um definitely worth um worth worth looking at. And I think it would it would help a lot of a lot of businesses. Because there are a lot, a lot of businesses over the over the next couple of months across different parts of the country are unfortunately going to see. Increases uh in the rates. And our last but not not least, our fourth councillor. Uh joining us uh this evening is into his councillor David Bynne, who represents the Trim uh local electorate area on Mead. County Council. Uh David, you're, you've been waiting there very, very patiently. You're very, very welcome. Um.
Thanks for asking.
What kind of things have been coming up in your area of Trim in County Mead?
Well, first of all, thanks for, thanks for inviting me on. And it was fascinating to hear the other conversations there from from the rest of you guys. Uh John and Dan and Paul. Uh similar issues across the board. It's budget week this week as well. Um I might get to that at the end, but the there's three massive issues in in Mead at the moment. And they are road safety, housing and water. So on a, on a very somber note, we buried a a young man, Alan McCuskey today. He was one of the five young people killed in County Loud during the week there. He was a Mead man. And the road safety situation in this county, in my view, is atrocious. I bring it up at every M D meeting. I'm always saying at the county council level as well, we need far more investment. In simple things like uh barriers at the side of roads through a bog where there might be a a a a a big drop either side. There's one particular stretch there where a bus would, a fifty three seater bus with schoolkids on it went into the ditch last year. A miracle no one was hurt or killed. It was down to the quick thinking of the driver that he actually managed to lessen the impact, I suppose. Um a lorry went in that along the same stretch about hundred metres further up just last week. Again, thanks be to God, no one got killed. All down the years, cars, tractors, everything fall off this particular stretch of road. It's been brought up with Mead County Council dozens of times, and it just seemed to be very slow to act. And I I I can't understand why. In a about two kilometres away from there, we had a fatality a few weeks back. A cyclist got killed. Uh and along that same stretch, a schoolmate of mine was killed um a number of years ago. It uh it's a couple of decades going now at this stage, but that just shows you how slow the whole process is. Of putting in any sort of speed reduction measures. So there, a number of weeks ago, I put together a plan, just just off my own bat. I just drew up maps of where I thought, I I'm an engineer by trade, so I have a bit of background in this. I I just drew up maps of where to put ramps, speed ramps for slowing people down. And I submitted that to the to the council. So it's gone through to a an S P C now, I think, on on road safety. So hopefully they'll glean something from that. And even if they implemented ten percent of the of the road safety measures or 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 even in the worst spots. It would be progress. So that's, so I suppose the most important thing on my plate over the last couple of weeks, road safety. The next biggest item is housing. And Mead County Council are not too bad on that front, in fairness, credit where it's due. But there is one particular uh development in Ratmilane called Ringfort. Now, I I you may have heard of this. It was on prime time the other night. And Potter Tobin T D brought it up and all there during the week as well. A developer moved in, sold houses um before they were finished, signed contracts, took deposits. And then, as the houses were almost finished, he said, sorry, change my mind, I'm not gonna make enough out of this. Here's your money back. Um I want to sell houses for a higher price. And he left people in limbo. There's people there renting for five years. This whole thing has gone on five years. There's people renting just to sort of tide themselves over until the outcome of this uh comes to a conclusion. So there's five families left who have paid deposits and have paid top up deposits and want the houses here. They haven't, they they haven't opted to take their money back. And uh there was a big um liquidation meeting about this during the week as well. So that's a huge mess. And at the moment, Mead County Council are, their 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 social housing stock. Is not adequate for for the needs of the people. So it might be an option there that they buy out the remaining houses. I don't know. But that's another huge issue. So those poor five families there now are are stuck in the middle of nowhere. They don't know what the situation's gonna be. And um ultimately, I know Dan Prender, I've no uh personal axe to grind with you. But personally, uh or ultimately, this is at the foot of Fianna Fáil and Fianna Gail. Uh they can bail out the banks, but they won't help a struggling developer or five struggling families. So, you know, if you've any say there at all, get me Hall Martin on the phone. We need to sort out these five families A S A P. Uh out from that, there's a number of other um issues with housing around the county. Uh long waiting lists. I suppose it's the same in every county, but um you know, that's run of the mill stuff, week in, week out. But the third big issue then in my area is water. The water is off in Trim and Enfield and Clonard every other night. Here in my house, we went through three washing machines at the beginning, beginning of all this water debacle. Um we put on a wash at night, the water would go off at night, and the washing machines over time burnt out. And we didn't know why this was happening. So uh uh this has been going on nearly three years now, where Irish Water or the council or whoever it may be. Has a reason, they turn off the water at night. Uh initially, they weren't telling anybody. Then it became turn it off from eight P M to eight A M. Then it became off all day as well. Then it became off for a couple of days at a time. And it's just over the last couple of years, it has been atrocious. Now, the county council say it's Irish Water's responsibility, but I mean, we're not, we we don't all live in silos. We have to work together. Everybody should be cooperating. And again, ultimately, it's it's at the foot of the Fianna Fáil and Fianna Gail government. Either they're not funding Irish Water enough to deal with the capacity problems or whatever it may be that are that are there. Or, you know, there needs to be a bit of a shake up of of personnel or maybe hire some more, or I don't know. But that that's a, that is a massive issue. I mean, in this day and age, in probably the wettest country in Europe. We're struggling to have good, clean, safe drinking water in three big areas of Mead. So um they're sort of my uh, that's a synopsis of my last couple of weeks. And uh uh the last year, I suppose, even it's 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 a recurring theme, these three big issues.
Gentlemen, Paul and I, we've been covering uh the the water crisis for the last about two years now. Uh and when we started off. So in case my um my internet goes, Paul will know my question. We've been asking an awful lot of county councillors recently, who are or who is Ustrer Aaron, Irish Water, answerable to? Because they seem to be doing everything with impunity and they don't don't seem to be answerable to anyone. Who are they answerable to?
Yeah, the good, it's a good question, Roisin. Um I know there's massive frustrating frustration and and often at the moment. We're bringing them in on the fifteenth of December. They're coming in committee. Uh we'd, I kind of asked the members that we bring them in committee because uh sometimes I find when they win into public meetings. It's very much stock answers and everything is kind of, you know, you don't really get too much. And they're they're as as much of politicians as we are as as answering. And maybe better. Um the answer is, I don't, I think they're untouchable in some respects, uh in the fact that they're constantly complaining that they've. They haven't got enough money. Um the government have given them money and have injected a lot of money in for new builds and various things in infrastructure. I just think ultimately, and members on on this forum might disagree, I think when initially it was set up, it was set up on the basis that. Phil Hogan was bringing in that there was going to be a standard charge across the whole country, like the property tax. And then when it got into the middle of it and near the end of it, they realised then they had the structures in place, but actually at that stage they hadn't the mechanism to fund it. And I just think we're just struggling big time uh behind the scenes since since that happened. I personally think there should be water charges. I don't think there should be property tax, but I personally think there should be water because it's such an essential. Um element of what we need to do everyday business and li- live our lives. But anyway, I'm not looking for an argument on that. But I think they're just completely underfunded from the start. And I think the government are trying to grapple, we're trying to get funding for them. Um and like some of the stuff, the 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 pipe work they have is completely outdated. They're like, they were handed, they were handed handed a mess really. Um some local authorities were good and kept up the the plants and kept money in invested. Other local authorities didn't. And that's the reality of it. Um and I think the 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 pipeline coming from from Tipperary to the whole way back up to Dublin, that's going to be an assistance in some some way. But I think we're going to be grappling with this issue for the next fifty years.
Wow, that 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 is in incredible. And I suppose, Roisin, the next question that I'm going to ask, and you you've probably asked it as well. Uh here on the Irish political roundup, do you think water services should go back into the local authorities? Put that up to the.
Yeah, I I'd leave it to the lads there, but I I I just think like, I thi- I think if it goes back into the local authorities. Or it stays where it is at the moment. I still think we're dealing with the same issues. I think, I think the it's, we have an inadequate system underground. Uh it that's corroding. And that's the reality of when there was pipes laid, the material that was used was the top notch material at the time, but that's corroding like mad. And there's just so many problems. Actually, Dublin is 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 uh a basket case at the moment. And the 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 like, if they don't get this pipeline up in the next maybe five to six years, it's gonna be serious problems in the capital. But um that's really my opinion anyway. I ju- I just think no matter where it goes now at the moment, it still needs money.
I agree. I mean, does it really matter who's in charge of the the actual, the the name over the door? It's, you're not gonna fix anything by by transferring from Irish Water to a to a to a to a local authority. In Trim at least, the problem is capacity. So they're granting planning permission for building housing estates and nursing homes. And three hundred more houses going out there to Dublin Road. And like, it's all just fed from one plant that is already at at half capacity. So that's the root cause of it. They just need more capacity, a bigger plant, bigger reservoir, bigger bigger pumps, more more uh. Infrastructure. And it's not there. So it it would doesn't matter if the local authority or Irish Water run the show. That's the issue.
But they need to be accountable.
Well, that that's the point I was gonna raise, Roisin. You know, like.
All in Fianna Gail. Thanks very much, lads. Thanks.
But if if it did come back under local authority control, uh those issues of accountability and trans- uh transparency. And being able to uh answer questions, like we we bring in Irish Water, maybe, I think it's quarterly uh every year. Um we had a a significant issue in terms of connection charges whereby Irish Water were uh charging exorbitant rates. In terms of for, again, rural families connecting on to 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 uh to mains and and just outside towns a- as well. Um huge price, in some instances up on twenty nine grand uh for connection, you know, hu- huge money, massive money. Uh and we we brought them in and obviously, you know, we we met with them. But I suppose, you know, Ishgairn have inherited. I suppose uh the old asbestos pipes, um you know, the lead pipes, you know, the the put in the plastic pipes for a couple of kilometres. Next week a spot bursts again, move on, move on, and the whole way up the country. And it actually ties in with a a point that Dan raised earlier on. In terms of the public lighting, uh because the local authorities have now inherited, uh you know, the E S B infrastructure. So all of these concentric cabling, um uh and dual cabling, uh and all of the uh improved works that need to take place. They're now falling at the at the uh pockets of the local authority. Uh and uh all of the local authorities are undergoing this uh P L I P programme, I mean, it's Public Lighting Energy Efficiency Programme. Uh Kilkenny County Council are the are the, I suppose, the the main local authority with responsibility and we all fall in under there. Uh and essentially, there's a a contract in terms of changing over the L E Ds. But the biggest problem in terms of public lighting is actually what's happening underneath the ground, no more than Irish Water. So it's it it's the infrastru- infrastructure going back to nineteen fifties in terms of the cabling. Uh and as I said, the local authorities have now inherited that. And it's going to be, uh and the more than John in terms of Irish Water reckons it could be fifty years before it's sorted. In terms of uh public lighting, it could be another fifty years before that's sorted. Uh because um nobody is putting their hand up in terms of saying, this needs to be funded. This is the level of investment. They're talking, this could cost billions in terms of uh making safe the underground. Um uh infrastructure with regards to public lighting. In terms of switching on the lights, you might actually find, and we're seeing it in terms of estates here in Athlone, that, you know, that the the there are three different parts of the. The light, obviously, and you have underground and you have the standard, and then you have the lamp on top, uh and and obviously the bulb is in the lamp. But more often than not, the problem is actually in the ground, because uh in terms of safety and health and safety. They need to get underground sorted first before they can change the bulb on the lamp. And that's why uh a lot of areas are going. One, two, three lights out on the street and will be out for a period of time, because the concentric cabling underneath the ground will have to be taken out. We have estates in Athlone, one estate last week, fifty grand, huh, to change the infrastructure underground, because three bulbs went. You know, so it it's a, it it's a huge issue. It's gonna need serious investment from government. Uh local authorities can't do it. Um you know, the in in terms of the P L I P programme, that's going to be uh finished in the next couple of years. And you're gonna have to start looking in terms of the the underground infrastructure. And the big question at that stage is who's gonna fund it? It can't be local authorities. It has to come from central government. Uh and what's the basis and what's the level of investment that's needed over the next twenty years to bring the infrastructure? Up to where it needs to be. Uh and there are big questions. And and I'm certainly not want to answer it in terms of this, this this call. But there there are certainly people up in Dublin that's gonna need to look at it going forward for next twenty years.
I I I think we're all in agreement anyway that the key issue is delivery there, like, you know, whether it's water or electricity. Things need to get moving one way or the other, whoever's name is above the door. Um but Dave, you made a very good point about water quality and supply there. Uh I'd say the the minister is probably as sick of me as he is of you of getting emails off me for my own area. It it just seems to be, you you send an email and, you know, they try their best in fairness to them. But the the issue seems to be resourcing and the lack of engineers coming through the system, which is a a systematic failure when you get down to it. Um there could have been a lot more foresight put into our educational policy there and trying to retain people. But look, it's a vicious cycle between all the various things going on in the country, but uh ultimately, we do have to get radical in how we do things. Ultimately, I do think we're better off keeping it with Irish Water, because at least we can think in terms of the national picture. What is actually going to suit the entire country? How can we get from A to B? Whereas if we confine it to a county. Then you're only ever going to think within the the boundary of that county. And if a certain group of councillors who have control one year. Decide that they want to pull money away from water services to put it more towards roads, then that's where your county begins to slip behind. Whereas another county might opt to to retain the budget and follow the recommendations. Or or go along with what is appropriate for that or needed, I suppose. But it's one of those very difficult things. And look, we aren't going to solve it here, but I I I think that discussion is key, that we do keep it going. Because um like ultimately, if we don't solve the the water infrastructure issues, we can't build more houses. We struggle to retain more young people in areas and immigration begin, it begins to look a lot more attractive, I suppose. If you can't put down roots at home. And uh even coming back to the point there about uh the P L I P upgrade. That is, it it's crazy money, like fifty grand to upgrade an in- uh infrastructure in the state. And how many of these are we going to discover as we go? Uh I can name about. I can name about three lights that were installed but never actually lit and they weren't lit after three years. And then we finally kicked up enough fuss that it became a bit of an embarrassment and it got dealt with. But I don't want to find out the bill for how much that cost. But it was, you know, for three years and how much was paid to get those up and then connect them or nearly connect them. It, it's, it's crazy, the amount of money that is wasted in this country. And I do think the culture does need to change around that. I think there's a lot of, a, a lot of an element of it's someone else's money, it's not mine. So, you know, it, it, it's expendable to a lot of people, which is disappointing. But look, it's, people do try their best, but equally there is a certain element of that culture, I find. I don't know if the others find it themselves.
I, I, I agree, Dan. I suppose, Dan, just going back to it, I know Paul touched on maybe underground and, and suppose the historic, kind of the, and, and lack of investment that's out there. But just in terms of, and I think Carlo is probably in the same region ourselves in terms of the same lighting company. I think there's three or four of us councillors that are in a cluster. I'm not sure if, if West Mead is in that or not, no leashes anywhere. But like, on, on occasions, we would have, and councillors would have brought up in any other business about lights not being repaired. Now, Paul's going to a deeper issue, but some of them is just kind of lights out as well, that where bulbs go and the L E Ds seem to be kind of don't be lasting as long as the, the old bulbs. But like you constantly need to be bringing that stuff under on your business, going to the Caerelock or whoever's in the chair and, and, and constantly bringing it up as you're not happy and that you want to get, you know, the lighting company, you want letters sent to them and say that they're not happy. Because that's, I tell you, we done that and it, it, it worked. We, I think it was two months in a row, the councillors just stayed on on it until eventually we started to see an improvement in the service. Doesn't solve the problems that Paul's talking about and I appreciate Paul has great knowledge in it and he's right in what he's saying. But even just the simple things, particularly now when the weather is changing and it gets dark, I can't understand it. Like it's the fundamental things that keep councillors happy. It's like, it's like what, what, what Dave was saying there, it's like simple things, roads, just keep the lights on. Like these are the things that people, your person that would norm, wouldn't normally give out, would give out, you know, and it's so simple. But yes, we, we just find ourselves taking hun- not saying hundreds of calls, but if I'm taking a phone call about a lamp out in the street, you can be sure there's another three councillors getting the same call. You'll be sure that they're ringing the same person inside the council or going on to the same website. And it just, that's that clogginess that we have in the system that Dan, you're talking about. It's just so inefficient when I just get it done or preempt it, lads, that this is going to happen, put more staff on. You don't need the staff in the lighting company in, in August, in July, August, September, but we need it in October, November, December, January, February. I just sometimes beg beggar's relief like, but listen, that's easy for me, I suppose, sitting on the outside. But just the other thing that can I just touch on, Dave, you mentioned about road safety and the fatality you had there. I, I'm like yourself with shouting for a long time. We need ramps, we need barriers, we need this. Have you, your budget passed yet, Dave?
No, it's coming up Monday.
I tell you, Dave, the best thing you could do is put a submission in. Now, I know the executive would say, oh, you have to find the money. But if you can align yourself with somebody or get someone to look at it, or even if you have the experience to look at yourself, pull fifty, sixty, seventy, a hundred thousand or make a submission that you want a hundred thousand to put into, into a pot. I got to say in stock answers you did, the worst thing management will do is they'll kick it back to S P C. It'll run around the S P C then for the next nine months, ten months, they'll all come back in and you'd all agree in the chamber. Then you go to the road engineer, the road engineer will say, ah, do you know what, Dave? Great idea, no money, no provision in the budget, Dave. Next thing you're waiting for the budget to come and next thing stiffs by again. Paul's nodding and laughing, he knows what I'm talking about. But this is the experience, I suppose, that we can bring to it. So if, what you need to do is you need to go in there and say, I'm passing no budget until I get a hundred or two hundred thousand. Now, it's small money, Dave, you put on a ramp and a pedestrian cost, it could be seventy grand, but it's a start. Like, we, we looked at when I took on this Caerelock, I said in the budget, we're passing no budget until I get road safety measures in, right? But you know what, Dave? Took me seventeen years to actually realise and stop getting run around because these engineers are the best will in the world and everything you'll bring, bring, they'll want to do. But they'll always come back and say no money. So I think that's the way you need to tackle it. And said to the lads, we need to have that provision in that, in that, in this year's budget. And once you get in once, you can start increasing on it from there on.
Yeah, thanks for that, John, sound advice.
No matter.
Yeah, no, I, I would certainly weigh in on that one as well, Devon, in terms of the, in terms of getting into the budget. And, and look, i- if you need to find money in a budget, there, there's always ways, you know, that you don't affect service delivery. They just don't affect, you know, the, the workings and the work under the council. But without money in the budget, you know, you, you'll go to the engineer and the engineer will say, oh, you know, the, the schedule of works in March, if it's not in that, if it's not in the roads programme, if it's not in the budget, not happening this year, not happening for the next three years. We, we had the same thing. We, we have actually put money aside in our budget for all approach roads to villages. So we've done out a kind of a priority list in terms of the villages in the county. And we were, I think next year, starting with two villages in the county, one in the south of the county, one in the north of the county, whereby they'll start to introduce chicanes and, you know, signage to tell people you're now approaching into a village, please slow down, children are play, all those signs, the solar signs, et cetera. But also the ramps then at built up areas, they're, they're key. And then next year, you know, you'll move on to the next two villages or the next three villages, depending on how much money we put in, in the budget. The other one that I just mentioned in terms of road safety is the safer approaches to schools. And again, there's, there's money under that scheme there as well that you might be able to find if, if some of those safety aspects that you included in your plan are outside schools. There's other funding streams that you, you might be able to tie in as well in terms of having a bigger pot than just what's in the, in, in the local authority budget.
Thanks, Paul, yeah, great advice as well. And I have to compliment West Mead County Council on the Harny there, there's great speed reduction measures there on the Harny. Just beside myself there and in the.
Yeah, and, and, and look, that, that, that's how we did it in, in terms of, we, we drew up the plan, we drew up the priority list, we put money aside for it and, and, and that's how it was done. There's no magic formula, there's no secret formula to it. But if you don't get your ducks in a row in terms of having money set aside, you know, you can have all the plans in the world and they'll sit there for, for five or 10 years until you actually put money aside.
And councillor Dan Pendle, we see you nodding in agreement there.
Yeah, no, there's really good advice there. I, I won't lie, I was nearly about to laugh when you said about S P C and there's not enough money in the budget. That seems to be the, the go to tool to get something off the agenda and keep it, keep it on the back burner for a year or two there. So look, that is great advice. I think my chief executive and the chief financial officer might be in a bit of bother next year if I can get a few to club together with me. But it's, it's good advice and thanks so much for that.
Well, we are coming up to the, over the hour now. Is there anything, anybody would like to say to each other or say anything that you've forgotten that is coming up or anything to the general public or your constituents?
No, I just, most final word from myself is, and, and you know what, Paul touched on it brilliantly and, and particularly for the, the, the new guys there, the budget's going to be passed, lads, in, in the next week. We've ours passed, but he's spot on. Once that's passed, you could come with anything you want after that and they'll, they won't disagree with you. But if the money's not in that budget, you will be talking to yourself till this time next year. So I know you mightn't have the support or this, that and the other, but at the end of the day, it's about making political noise and forcing the other parties to maybe fo- fall in with it. Get your ducks in order this week, gouge your wishlist, start small, might be only a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, whatever you feel. Put, pitch it in such a way that's a county scheme that we won't get everything done. But if we got three safety measures done this year, maybe three the following year, over the course of the twelve fifteen, imagine if we was pick twelve or fifteen before we start knocking on the doors in the next local election. And if you can kind of get into the media and kind of get, get, get your, go to, I would say, and, and I think Paul would agree on this, just go directly to the actual director of finance that's delivering the budget. Sit down with them, make an appointment with them and saying, listen, I'm very happy to support this, but I need to get two hundred thousand in that pot and that's what I'm bringing forward. And even if you mightn't have the support of the day of the meeting, you propose it and someone will second it. They might say to you, where are you getting the money? And they're right to say that because you're supposed to find the money if you're making a proposal. But say, listen, I met with the finance officer, I, I think this is important, there's loads of experienced councillors in this room. Surely we think this is a, a prime, prime issue that needs to be dealt with and I'm asking you for support on it. And I suppose that's, I think that's a, a great statement by Paul because once it's gone, lads, we'll be back this time next year, there's still talk about it.
Yeah, and, and look, Dave and, and Dan and, and John, you'll always find money. We, we went into a budget process last year whereby we didn't go into any in committee meeting, we just went straight in. It was, it was not the best way to do business. We went in, we obviously had very different approaches to what the executive had. We were going to adjourn to a later date, not have the meeting at all. But a, a number of us sat down, we had to find six hundred and ninety thousand because there was some aspect in the budget last year we didn't agree with and we found it. Now, it took, took a little bit of time, but we found it, we got agreement with the executive, we took out the pieces we didn't like and we found a six hundred and ninety thousand. And you, you will find it without affecting service delivery. They're there, they're, I, I, I had a mentor twenty years ago that told me, it's not what's in the budget you're looking for, it's what's not in it. You know, and, and they were always key pieces of advice that stuck with me, but if you need to find money, you'll always find it. And, and I, I always say, don't work in a silo. You know, obviously go to your, your director of finance, tell them what you want. But also then, I, I, I'm a firm believer in working teams. And, you know, I always say to the members in, in West Mead, you know, I, I don't believe in those in power and those in opposition. I, I see twenty councillors in West Mead, we'll all work together. You know, there, there's always things we disagree with, always. But in the bigger picture stuff, generally, we, we get some sort of consensus before we move forward.
Well, gentlemen, I'm sitting here thinking, you know what, you know.
Just for, Roisin just froze there for, for a second.
Did I, we will, you know how Archie has Ash Joe, they'll be saying Ash John, Paul and Michael Sheen. That will be county councillors, Ash John, Michael Sheen and Paul Hogan. Gentlemen, thank you so much for coming on. And we really appreciate it. But before we go and before, if I freeze, Paul knows exactly, we'd like to offer our sincere condolences to the families of the five young teenagers that passed away this weekend, our sincere condolences.
Yes, indeed, it's, it was, it was an awful tragedy that, of course.
Yeah. So until next time, it's Ash John and Michael and Paul. Until next time, here from the Irish Political Roundup, thank you so much for taking the time to join us on your Friday evening. Councillor John Loughy, Councillor Paul Hogan, Councillor Dan Pendle and Councillor Dave Boyne. Thank you so much indeed for taking the time to come on the Irish Political Roundup.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, folks.